You're. Right? Yeah, the gentleman. I'm. Also. That's it. About all fifteen. We're pretty happy with that. Women now. Three every year. Money just split off. All of them, the two pantry. S C T backpack program. Well, this year we decided to send it to go to the mental health. So we came up with one thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Oh, food. We we supplied food. We had an ice cream social once live and we had a fall festival. And they also built. And what they did this year is they allowed people to buy some of the food.
Can you hear me?
Does it matter now, does it? All of our voices clearly were. We'll give this to. Happy here will be leaving. Our intent. Okay.
That this idea that Garrett had. You know, how are you going to be able to find?
Um, well, before I really get started too, I I really got, you know, um, thank a lot of people in the districts here for the support. Um, you know, when I first approached Kurt with this idea, um, you know, and he was. Even as I was telling him my idea, I thought it was kind of crazy, but he didn't have any. But was very supportive. Same thing, Tim, you know, great, you know, very supportive of of this whole process as well as the idea. The vision. Um. Liz really has been very, very big part of this. Um, so about a year ago, I I had this idea of, you know, I'm a one person. And department. With being a smaller department, you don't always have the access to some of the fancy equipment that some of the other high schools. In the area, larger high schools in the area might have. Um, and I I just saw kind of a need for this. In the, as I do my research, I saw there's this role skills gap, you know, studying, you know. Kids or adults through colleges with the right skills. Uh, so so it was kind of a concern. Um, so really my my idea, my vision was was to create a a center. That would be in St. Craig County that all the high school, local high schools would be able to have access to. Um, just to get some more advanced programs, some advanced equipment that typically high schools couldn't afford. Um, you know, and as well, you know, some advanced curriculum, things like that. Um, and then same thing with businesses, they they, you know, need some some support as well. Um, we have some smaller manufacturers in the area that, you know, really needs high skilled employees that really have it from the facility. Um, and then, you know, just the the community in general as well. Um, so we're so. You know, this kind of this idea I had, I I ran it by Kurt. Great go with it, add support from him, um, you know, six things, Tim, ran it by Tim. Um, reached out to some local businesses to see, you know, is this a valid idea, you know, is this is there a need for it? Um, they're very supportive of this idea for for the manufacturing industry. Um, and helping support and meet their needs. And then just reaching out to to Northwood and even Chippewa Valley Technical College as well. Um, just kind of running the idea past them. And, you know, everyone along the way said, yes, great idea, you know, it sounds sounds, you know, really interesting. Um, so I, you know, I I like to have these kind of big projects and like, okay, I'll take the next. Years, if not who knows how long, ten years. Um, and write some smaller grants and hopefully get some more basic equipment in our our shop and everything else and hopefully build up our program and then hopefully give some more access to. To other local schools, I think, using. Um. And then Liz contacted me and said, hey, here's this grant, we should make you look at it. And uh, we we ended up partnering with uh, Chippewa Valley Tech. Um. The grant was from Wisconsin. And then, and so it's a statewide grant, um, they were giving out a hundred million dollars to um, help support, you know, new initiatives, you know, and and that's going to help. Support. Areas affected by COVID, um, you know, there are a hundred thirty applicants, twelve applicants were actually awarded this grant. Um, where actually this is our our, this grant is even bigger. Um, because we have Chippewa Valley Tech, we have Northwood Tech, uh, we have St. Craig Central, uh, T P M I and Boomer, uh, C O, Fairchild. School districts. Uh, so this is part of what is known as the restore grant. Um.
Sure don't quote me on the acronym, but it was restoring employment. Through um, training and something else called K H E, but it says, I don't forget what that on there, but. Um, basically what we did is we reached out to our business, oh, it's right there, sorry, nice, restoring employment through support, training, outreach, improvement. And education in Wisconsin, so really teaming up with C B T C, we were able to cover northwest Wisconsin as well as west central Wisconsin, so. Our reach goes all the way up to Ashland and Superior, C B T C goes all the way over to Clark County, so um, the partnerships. Are really focused within that part of Wisconsin, which is a huge area to attend, so our business partners on the grant. The Lotto Contour, um, Donaldson's, Russ Davis, O E M and S M C, and as we continue to talk to people. More people are getting excited about this collaboration. So a majority of the grants is going to the St. Craig Manufacturing Center, which is actually going to be at high school. Um, I don't know where uh, where it's going to land. Um, but basically we wrote in for five thousand square foot building. That we would be able to train high school students in the morning and then also have business and industry partners come in in the afternoon, so. With our labs, the way they're set up at Northwood Tech. Um, this was a great partnership because we have students in there from seven thirty in the morning to five o'clock at night, so when it came for businesses to come in and do their training during the day. We didn't have space, so this is an excellent collaboration for the technical college as well as the school district and our business partners and our community.
And then just to kind of, you know, again, uh, showcase the idea that, you know, yes, it just kind of snowballed, but, you know, Liz has been. Great with gathering a lot of data, um, not necessarily just within, you know, this local area, but more statewide and looking at a bigger picture as well. Um. You know, and then just looking at, you know, local businesses that they, you know, have obviously been struggling to find employees here on COVID here. Um, you know, and why are they having, you know, these these issues? Um, this was from the Wisconsin employer survey, uh, from this past summer. Um. So really, I I think, you know, you can see that second on the list there for the thirty percent. Um, so so and then obviously they have shortages and everything else. Um.
Yeah. So then the supporting data, I don't know if you guys are on, I know you can't see on the screen, but this is kind of the page that we're on, so this is kind of our first initial step that we took. Um, looking at this data, so. We are really focusing on that maintenance technician piece and the packaging at this outreach center and hopes at some point. Um, we'll also be able to bring in some C and C machines and things of that nature, but keeping it more of that advanced manufacturing standpoint, so you'll see that. St. Craig County alone for maintenance stacks have four hundred and eighty-five openings, um, the national average is four hundred and fifty-six, there's fifty-three average monthly postings and only fourteen hires in the month. So you can tell that those jobs are going unbuild at this point.
If you want the folks on the line to see it, I think have fade on your computer. To extend the screen.
What did you say?
I think it's a fade.
Okay, so then if you look at this, the second couple screening jobs that we had, basically we surveyed our businesses in our area, C B T C surveyed their businesses in their area. Um, the lowest sum is actually the lowest average and signifies the greatest shortage. So you'll see that fabrication machine and welding was the top, um, Northwood Tech partners with the Richmond on a dual um, credit academy that's opened up. Other local school districts, so when talking with Garrett, we didn't want to compete with that. Um, so we kind of went to that production and maintenance tech route, um, as we were moving forward. Um, we also looked at the high demand skills that employers are going to need and we want to incorporate that in that space, so. Um, one of the biggest things was that this is position specific technical skill, but tendance teamwork, problem solving, communication and critical thinking, and I think with. What we're going to offer out of this space, we're going to fit all of those. And then. Just knowing that employers are investing in new technology, I mean, some of your employers right here in Hammond. Have put in over three million in automation just in their their first quarter, so. Um, just knowing that. Maintenance stacks are going to be there, it's going to be needed. Um. Even if we're not seeing the big openings in automation right now, you're going to see them in the next couple of years.
All right, so what this all really means and what we're uh, bringing into uh, St. Craig Central and St. Craig County is uh. With the new facility, um, and even prior to the new facility being constructed. Um, we are bringing in uh, mechatronics basic dual credit academy, um, so we're partnering with Northwood Tech on that for students, and I I have more slides on that. Uh, industry certifications that we'll be offering, and again, I'll talk more about it in a little bit. Uh, plastic injection mold, the holding apprenticeship, and then uh, mechanical design, um, as a model, so. Just because I get a lot of funny looks when I start talking about mechatronics, um, just it's not a common thing. Uh, but basically it's kind of an integration of electronics, um, some computing and then mechanisms or mechanical systems. Um, so the easiest one I always like to say is with like a car, you know, minus the the really big gas engine, but you have your your electronics, you have your. Your sensors and everything else, you have a computer in there, and then you have all these mechanical systems that are integrated with it. Um, that's a great example, or even, you know, a lot of robotics and things like that. Um. So it's really bringing these all under one umbrella here. The dual credit academy uh, will be open to uh, our some of our local high schools as well. Um, I have a lot of interest, I've had some students already. Um, at the high school for for especially those seniors for next year that would want to partake in this academy. Um, our goal is to get about sixteen students in per year, we want to make sure that we are um, serving our students well, so we can't. It's tough to get too big of a class size with this, um, for for. Um, and our course offerings, it is going to be comprised of five different college level classes. Um, with D C electricity, uh, fluid power systems, D C electricity, uh, packaging systems, equipment control and power transmission. Component treatment. Um, and I really, I like these classes and I'm glad we went in this direction because I feel a lot of these. Are such very broad skills that encompass a lot of different areas even beyond what mechatronics offers. Um, you know, I've had students that are looking to go into electrical engineering and it's like, well, this would really get your heat weather and get you some some experience in that. Um, or even mechanical engineering. Um. And then this does lead into, you know, a lot of different areas as well, so I think really these are greatly for century skills that. I feel a lot of students should really learn by using a great micro program, this is electric or or um. They have electronics in their program, uh, so a body of completion students will earn a one-year technical diploma through Northwood.
So it's fourteen credits, it's going to be completely free to the student, so what we're doing right now with Garrett is mentoring him through the classes. Um, with our content experts and faculty members on our our campus. Um, he's actually taking the same classes that the students will be taking. Um, and we rolled that all into the grant to make this possible, so. Um, we rolled the first year into the grant for uh, for us to hire an instructor to kind of mentor with Garrett through the process as well. Um, so that's all included in that first year and then they'll be doing kind of the business and um. Industry training in the afternoon for us as well as helping Garrett where we need to at the high school. So.
On the D C, I'm assuming like twenty-four little D C, uh. A low voltage.
Yes, yes, low voltage, yes.
Um. And then with it, is that like a Siemens, Rockwell? Alma, like.
Yeah, um, it's Allen Bradley is a lot of our.
So Allen Bradley, Rockwell.
Yeah, yes.
Allen Bradley and Rockwell is what we utilize that are the best, almost.
Sign the two percent of. Or America, so. Okay.
So then just the next page that we're. It's just the pathways, so you'll show here, um, once a student's complete that mechatronics basic technical diploma. They'll be eligible for potential careers in this area, so they will be able to, you know, start as an entry level maintenance technician somewhere. Um, like you'll see on average, they make, well, they don't have the average here, but I think it's about forty, forty-five thousand dollars starting out with that. Um, and then they can go continue on to take our automated packaging systems technician program, and that's sixty-four credits, but they would already have fourteen. Credits done, so they won't have to retake those. Um, most of our automated packaging systems technician students have jobs. Um, within their first two months of school if they're not um, taken already, so it's great to, it's a it's a great career. Um, and then they can also continue on to transfer at T W S, um, packaging program, so it's a nice clear pathway.
Uh, industry certifications that we're going to be offering as well in addition to the manufacturing academy. Um, the manufacturing skills, how to call it C P T. Um. Again, this is more for the entry level, um, positions in manufacturing, it's really starting to hit on some of those soft skills that as soon as we need. As far as attendance, we're thinking that cheap work out and everything else. Um, in addition to um, some of the safety, you know, quality and measurement on the manufacturing processes and production.
So there's over sixty essential manufacturing skills that they'll learn, so it's really introducing them to manufacturing. Um, which is something that. Not a lot of students get to take advantage of or know what happens within, you know, the closed doors of our industry that. Are in Hammond or Baldwin or anything like that, so um, hopefully it'll open their eyes to what the potential could be.
And we're also investing some really cool industrial robotic trainers, uh, sort of just panic, um. Robots and students through the level one and level two operator certification process. Um, and the nice thing with all of these certifications with the mechatronics academy, um, they all fall under the Wisconsin C T percentage. So again, we would be able to take advantage of those students that are needing all these certifications.
So then we also are, right now we have our classic injection mold setup apprenticeship on our Richmond campus, it's in the back of our. Um, machine tool shop, so we're really really looking for a space that kind of created like more of a clean room. Um, for where the students would be working. So in talking, this this works nicely with what we were doing over there, so we're going to be moving our classic injection mold setup apprenticeship over. To the high school and then also creating a pre-apprenticeship program for students, so that would be two to four credits. Um, that students would earn towards this, and the one thing that S C C already has going in a couple of our other schools. Is they're partnered already with Malato uh, for youth apprentices, so they're actually working there already, so we have a lot of students from. The lot of that go from a youth apprenticeship right into a registered apprenticeship. Um, so this is just another opportunity to. Um. Build those relationships and networks, so right now our companies are in a lot of to advantage, moving by tech, by others, also. Some other companies that we've been talking to in the Baldwin area, in the Richmond area to get them them in here, so basically. They would be doing old setup for plastic injection machines. And that's where we would like to have C and C equipment over there too at some point, because those students would be able to use that instead of having to go up to our campus in Richmond. So.
And then as far as some community outreach as well, um, working with some of the jail facilities. Um, bringing in equipment, we have some great mobile trainers that we can actually take two of them, um, to like, put a program for them and some more skills.
Yeah, so that's one of the things that we did within this classroom is made it as mobile as possible, so if you had to take it out and train. Um, for business and industry or go out and recruit at a local high school, we'd be able to take stuff with us, um, and bring it back. Easily enough and things of that nature, so. And then also working like with workforce resource, they're your local like Viola, ATSAT and W two provider. So they have fundee or money for training and things of that nature, so it would be training adults, dislocated workers who have been laid off. Um. Veterans, youth aging on a foster care and even that risk. So really our next steps within this is creating an advisory committee, um, for our local businesses, so right now we have a job posting out there. Um, for the position at the high school, that'll hopefully be hired by the end of the end of March if recruitment goes well, um. Garrett's working on his classes, we're doing our recruitment event. Um, on campus to show students in our local high schools what mechatronics is all about and what automated packaging is all about. That's going to be held on March tenth, um, and then really just looking at designing the space and. Explaining our network with our local industries, so. All said and done, we got about three million dollars. Um, between Northwood Tech and St. Craig Central, one point six for five million for the building. Um, Northwood Tech also got a mobile welding trailer that we're going to be able to travel to jails and. High schools that don't have welding equipment and things of that nature, so.
And even in addition with this being part of a larger regional grant, that whole grant was ten million dollars, so we're bringing it to the region of support of a lot of manufacturing careers. So we threw a lot at them. Um, and even as I was going through, it just still sounds crazy and still I believe we're we're actually, you know. Be able to do all this and it's been just. From everyone.
We we talked through a good chunk of this this summer, I think it was around the, oh, right, didn't we talk? On the phone going through this presentation? Norman Anderson, Windows.
Were you?
Yeah.
Maybe.
I mean, some of the slides are the same that I went through before, so, um, yeah, I think it's great, like, there's a huge need. It'll sound like we have. We have a lot of openings.
Yeah.
Um. You know, still. We just, I mean, you go across it, right, we have two hundred plus manufacturing dogs open, we have. Um, mechatronics, we have fifteen currently posted live right now, so, I mean, there's a lot of different inside of that space.
So much data for sure, the students next year, once they graduate.
We'll be looking for places to do tours and things.
Yeah, so if you need anything with that, I mean, it's not the school or stuff that you need tours with that, we're looking to partner.
That'd be great.
And I think. I'd have to go back and look at the email, but there's somebody from Anderson's that wants to be our advisor from a date to. Um, look him over and tour the tech school, so I'll have you give that person's name as well.
Uh, yeah, I've got another, yeah, so we have two divisions. So I'll get you the other division. I like to make sure I. Something like getting only one view of it, so I'll get you the full.
Okay, that'd be great, appreciate the support.
Maybe let's talk about the competitiveness of this grant. You know, how many were awarded?
I think Garrett mentioned that at the beginning, a hundred and thirty applications, only twelve were awarded, so. Um, and then round two is open. Now again, but I, the the pot is much smaller than the first round, so it was good that we got in, we went back and forth on whether we should. Write our own ten million dollar grant and then we decided to join forces with um. C B T C as we had a partnership with manufacturing works as a nonprofit organization that we all sit on with local businesses and. The workforce development board and local high schools, so. We decided to go that route and I think it served us well and that's what it got, got us here, was more of a. Outreach to more companies than we would have done in our.
It was a great partnership and everyone's been very supportive. Helping each other out through the whole process.
I would say thank you both for going after it, I mean, this is. Huge, thinking strictly of their our students, not necessarily jails or curricular facilities, but just of our students, it's a huge opportunity. This is huge.
It's very, very unique.
Yeah, thank you both for for going after it.
Yeah.
Is the, when you mentioned that with the jail, is that a unique thing, I mean, is that something that? Is that done a lot or like the this mobile trailer you're talking about that you got, is that something that was real common or is this?
There's quite a few in the state of Wisconsin, um, more down towards like the Matt, um, the Locky area, um, in Madison area. So as far as like jail, we do do quite a bit of work with our jails, so we do do welding academies, but they come over to our campus and they're on campus and then. Um. It's just logistically trying to get them out and have the amount of people that have to come with them from jail to treat present that day, it would be much easier to pull up. A trailer out behind the gates and, you know, able to have them come right out to us and train, so that's kind of where we've moved more to that mobile. Um, labs for that portion, because it just serves the counties and the jails much better than having to. You know, bring people over vans and things of that nature, so.
Sounds great. Sounds great.
Yeah.
We saw it appreciate it. Sounds like the students are already excited.
Have, have.
Reports at my house anyways, so.
Yeah, that hasn't been turned out.
Yeah. So and I think it'll be fun when they get over on March tenth to kind of look at the lab. Um, you know, and look at what the, what they'll be doing. Um, like Garrett said, a lot of it is engineering without even knowing that it's engineering. Like they won't think of it that way, but really it is. So. Um, our instructors talk about that too. It's a great way, a great place to start. Um, businesses are offering tuition reimbursement for students. Um, so you get your foot in the door and, you know, then you're. You're starting with a technical diploma to an associate degree and then your bachelor's, maybe master's, and you could have your business paying for that. So we've seen that. That happened a lot. So.
Yeah, and it certainly aligns, right? Your, your vision and, and our vision certainly align on these high demand skills. Um, and offering opportunities for kids. I know if. Put immense amount of work in, but there's a lot of work ahead. You realize that. Um, and speaking of that, maybe just speak a little bit, the timeline, what pieces you can maybe implement as soon as next fall and. And I can speak a little bit about to now, the timing is perfect with potential referendum as well.
Uh, yeah, next fall we are going to be bringing in the Mechatronics Academy away. I see having, like you said, I need for supportability with a lot of these trainers. So. Um, if they don't take up as much space as you would think. Um, so we, yeah, we are shooting for, uh. Twelve, sixty students, um, for the, the academy next year. Um, and then we are also going to be offering those industry certifications, uh, starting gradually next year. And if not even earlier, maybe the summer. Um. So for the, the Fannick, uh, role industrial robotic trading and then the S S C, uh, C P T, uh, training as well.
We'll get our award letter hopefully next week. Um, is kind of what C B T C was saying. And then from that standpoint, then we can start ordering equipment. Things that nature and then it's I think a ninety to two hundred day turnaround on some of our stuff, but we also have extra. Pieces that we can pull from our campus and stuff that we need to throw out. So.
So it's Garrett and then someone that, that you hire or?
Yeah, through the grant we did write in an opposition that Northwood would hire. Will help support this as well.
But in terms of alignment with the referendum, you know, again, if it passes and then work collaboratively with the design phase, I mean, part of it is five thousand square foot. You know, space. So obviously it would work collaboratively to, to make, you know, all that fit, but I think it's perfect timing and. Um, perfect visions that align with the referendum and C T E vision it has. So, um, it's a great thing, you know. So thanks once again.
Yeah, we're excited.
Yeah.
Need opportunity for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Excellent agenda. We have the financial reports.
Okay, bank balances as of January thirty first, twenty twenty-two. Citizen State Bank checking is nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. The Citizen State Bank money market, two million, three hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred sixty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. Fund forty-six, fifty-three dollars and eight cents. The suicide prevention, sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. American Deposit Management Debt Service, five million, seven hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and forty-seven cents. The total bank balances is nine million, forty-six thousand, six hundred. And seventy dollars and ninety-eight cents.
All those in favor? Close. Um, actually the agenda is consideration of the agenda. With that, without, um, seven part-time and one full-time. Two, one, is it?
Second.
All those in favor? Close. Uh, next on the agenda is administrator reports.
Uh, the first matrix you can see, uh, we started out the year, um, September, one thousand six hundred and three students that's in seats. Um, went as high as one thousand six hundred and ten last month, where currently one thousand six hundred and nine students in seats. And moving down to the middle there sheet, uh, free to reduce lunch rate, like to point out, we're at twenty-three point zero seven percent as compared to the state average. Um. Uh, back in twenty twenty-one is thirty-seven point five is the most recent on the app, but we've always held steady in, uh. Below twenties. Then also in terms of the, um, virtual school, we have seventy-two full-time virtual students that are district residents, forty-eight part-time. Uh, and then our virtual charter school, which are all open enrollment students taking virtual courses. We have two hundred and twenty-five, uh, this month. Uh, as compared to two hundred and seventy-two at this time last year. And then lastly, just our overall open enrollment count, again, that's resident, uh, that's, um, students virtually or in seats, but any students open enrolled. From another district to ours, three hundred and forty-six open enrollees in. One hundred twenty-one outs for a net deposit of two hundred and twenty-five students. I want to thank, um, all the ladies in the offices that are involved in this count. It's very important, uh. Time-consuming task and really appreciate each one.
All right, um, next is the key work of our school board. A discussion on future district needs and priorities.
Yep. Uh, again, in terms of referendum communication, uh. Stacy and I and Jen sometimes, uh, speak with the Market Johnson and Wolf folks and talking about. Our communication strategies and timeline timelines, um, currently, um. Done is, uh, contracted to Market Johnson, um. Working on finalizing the video. That's the next bigger day. Nice, a video of lots of, uh. Footage of the spaces, the needs and, um. Testimonials by various folks, um, working on setting up another one, uh, of board members, administrators and community members. Um, to have another flavor for video. Both videos will be used in entirety and, you know, one, one video, but also snippets of that video will be used. Posted on social media. That's one of the strategies, um, do a presentation to the staff tomorrow afternoon on the referendum. Of course, the community meeting is the next Wednesday in a large group and structural, uh, we worked on the agenda. Today and, uh, I'll be sending out again reminders and advice to our community task force specifically, everyone that was, uh, working on that. Want to make sure retention with. With inviting those folks, um, let me just continue with, uh. Uh, social media posts, um, fly, uh. Backpack, um, flyers are next, um, and then, uh, the. Mailer, it's, um, eleven by seventeen folded twice, actually, um, a little cheaper rate to fold that on that small, um, it's currently at minimum press. Should be back any day now and will be in mailboxes next. That's one of, that's the first of three flyers that are going out. Um, they're copying, uh, one that they're using in another district with some really large banners, uh, just reminding folks to vote and that we're in a referendum, going to referendum. About, you know, on April fifth, to put it to various locations and hide this areas, uh, for sure. Three schools, district office, maybe Trinity, et cetera. So. That's another strategy. And, um, then, um, Market and Johnson will, uh, will be intentional with getting the vote yes committee, but that's more. The backend where things ramp up and intentionally waiting till near the end and all the, all the referendum communication will ramp up. You know, uh, from, you know, some once a week stuff to twice a week to pretty much every day then the. Referendum. So feel good in, in, in how things are proceeding. Uh, the website Stacy put together, uh, is amazing. It's. Completely comprehensive. I mean, all the information is there and, and, uh. I think in a user friendly manner for people to consume, but, uh, the opt-in method obviously doesn't work the best. We want to try to push stuff out and. And combat the, I didn't know about it, you know, um, rhetoric sometimes that, that we see and we saw last time. So. Feel good about all things are going. If you have any ideas and different things, I had a, a parent that's in the, in the marketing business, reach out to me. There's some great ideas. I really appreciate it. Sure, them Stacy. So we're gonna focus on that and it'll be part of the staff presentation tomorrow too, but, um, just being really intentional with, um. You know. Putting stuff out that we're doing every day, the great stuff that we're doing every day, um. And, uh, just hyper awareness of that and, and how that can, can, uh, help, help the referendum. So. Well, that's, come on, anything to add Stacy with?
Did actually just have dinner with a parent, um. For the meeting and she said she thinks we're doing a much better job this year than last year. So. That's one.
Yeah. All the, the, the large thirty inch by four inch holsters and, uh, each building. Um, realized we need, like, more, some more easels. So those will be here one day to help with those displays, but the feedback is, yeah, folks are stopping, reading them. Paying attention to them. I've heard that, yeah.
My kids came home and told.
That's good. It's good.
Um, next on the agenda is a review of the COVID mitigation plan for the certain funding requirements.
And Jen, feel free to jump in. I can start with kind of the high level stuff, but it's a requirement as part of this federal funding. Of course, one of the many strengths, uh, attached. In order that this time gets reviewed every six months. So of course it was reviewed in August. Um, this was on the timeline, you know, six months later. Of course, you know, we changed and edited it back in January, I believe it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. Yeah, January twelfth. Um, so we just need an opportunity for feedback and public input. These board meetings put it on the agenda, suffice for that. Um, and then like, not just, you know, the plan, but you know, how we're going to spend it. Jen's talking about that at the later, uh, uh, agenda item. Specifically as for three, um, but at this time, I'd like to open it up for any comment and how we should. How or if we should revise any bit of our COVID mitigation plan.
I'll say no changes since the last time we reviewed it. Correct. Didn't seem, but yeah, no, the five day was the latest thing to change.
And the numbers are on a positive trend, like much better than they were recently.
I haven't tried it. See, I think that I changed it. It all still makes sense to me. Lead up. Public address.
There isn't any certain concerns, um, I believe we have to approve this. Right? Correct month, right?
Yep.
So I'm sure anybody in the chat, uh, because they didn't say about it or. Is there anybody in the chat? So. So just through this year, we have to do this or?
No, um, the next.
We'll be through September of twenty twenty-four.
I could just go to. What it used to be. That's correct.
Right, that's our plan.
No plans of plans, right?
Is that for you?
Yeah. So, uh. I'd take the. I'd make a motion to accept that as presented.
Second. Uh, all those in favor?
Hi. Close.
Uh, next on the agenda is a quarterly board learning meeting location.
So, you know, the last one we had here, um, it's been mentioned a few times, I know perhaps we should go offsite or whatever. So, um. The next one is scheduled for Wednesday, March ninth coming up. Location to be determined, just thought I'd, uh. You know, but then I'm there to ask for your input. If you have a preference or you have some ideas that you'd want me to check into. Open up for discussion.
It's mid-eighties in Vegas.
Lights are cheap. And then for Mark's madness and it was forty and running in here for just like. Or solve banquetal looked really nice. I guess it's expensive.
What about some of the, uh, local, common malls? And then some of them even have kitchens if we need it. Most of them they kept kitchens if they do.
Warren and Hammond. Well, at the Pleasant Valley, of course, oh. Pleasant Valley has an outhouse, right?
I'll bring my own.
I'm probably finding it to hearing this. We're doing okay last night, so.
I thought it actually worked. Okay.
Yes.
Champ was the one that was. Yeah, that actually works. Okay. Here.
I'd say the where is less important than.
Yeah.
Who in the? The ones.
I guess I would leave it painted up there.
Joe, I'm making motion to do the next board learning here, district office. Don't like. Otherwise, yeah. At six o'clock or. It wasn't at six P M. I was about sixty. Yep. Second.
All those in favor? I mean, tied it. So. Um, this is a consideration of approval of Fund Forty-Six Capital Improvement Plan exhibit following.
So, um, when Erica read the treasurer's report, you know, we have this Fund Forty-Six account that has fifty dollars and eight cents in it. And a part of the requirement to have that account is we have to approve a plan yearly and how we would spend those funds. Um, obviously if there was more money in there, that would be better, but at this point it's the fifty-three dollars. So I went through and updated the highlighted items. Um, they were all items that had originally had a twenty twenty-one date on them and we updated them. Some of them to twenty twenty-two, but we also had some, uh, items that Mr. Green had gone around and. Just kind of checked out most of it being great, I think, that he felt like could go a few more years. So some of those items changed to a twenty twenty-five date. Otherwise, everything else on here is the same as it was last year. And of course, on the back page, you can see the cost broken down by year. So if we, if we were able in the future to put money into this, you know, these are the things that we can spend those funds on. Of course, we can make changes at any time, but we have to approve a plan purely. Any questions?
You need more comments? There's not a lot we can do with fifty-three dollars to attack those.
Not much flexibility there.
Not in passive audit.
Yeah.
Okay, the motion to approve the Fund Forty-Six Capital Improvement Plan.
Questions? What you said with you doing? Plan. It's something we can in the future that's coming up there and it's for sure. Yes. Um, all those in favor?
I, I, close.
All right, uh, next on the agenda, consideration of approval of Essor. The budget plan.
So as, you know, Tim was saying, the COVID mitigation plan kind of ties in with this. If we don't have an updated. COVID mitigation plan, then DPI will cut our access to this grant money as well. So just keep that in mind. Um, back in October, we kind of had three pieces of Essor funding for COVID relief. And if you recall, this one came around right after COVID hit in twenty twenty. Our district received forty thousand dollars and the entire amount was spent on P P E cleaning supplies. Um, plastic partitions, all of those types of things for safety and cleaning purposes. And then in. Much. Nope, it was December of twenty. Um, there was a second round that was approved. And that amount, original. There was a second round that was approved and that amount of original allocation was a hundred and thirty six thousand, seventy four dollars. Since then, we have been approved for an additional three hundred and forty one thousand, eight hundred dollars under SIR two. Then last year in March of twenty one, they approved a third round of funding. We still don't have our entire allocation, but as of today, we know that we're gonna receive three hundred and six thousand dollars. So as a part of SIR three, we have to have that public input again on how we're gonna spend those funds. So if you remember back to last October, when we set the levy, we had to use, I took the money that we thought we were gonna be getting for SIR two and SIR three. And I divided it into two pots, one for this year, one for next year, because we're not receiving any additional funding at the state level. So we were using that to backfill existing expenditures. So when you look at the report, you, it should say handout twelve D on it. You can see that all of the costs that are being put in there are existing expenditures. Because we needed to fulfill that three hundred and sixty eight thousand that we had anticipated using from that funding for existing costs that we have. You'll also notice that all of these are in the twenty two, twenty three budget year. So we're gonna be using our SIR two funds for our expenditures this year for that three hundred and sixty eight thousand that we need. And then next year, the entire SIR three allocation will be used for existing funds. So just in going through and looking at all the criteria for how we can use this money and what would be. Maybe the least reporting requirements, but still fulfilling what we need to do. I I came up with our hotspots that we purchased for students and staff so that we have that connectivity. The VMware renewal is also similar to that, it's so that if you're at an offsite location, you can log into your computer and have access to all your files, so that's maybe a little more for staff. But some of the students and some classes do use that as well. Certain insurance costs, we were able, we are able to run through that grant, so I have those in there. And then busing, I was able to add that first year lease cost for the buses that we purchased in August, so that was another thing. Part of the SIR three funding is also that we have to set twenty percent of those funds aside for learning loss. So DPI has published a document that has specific things that we can do to help students get caught up. So that they're back on track and twenty percent of these funds must go toward that. So that's where you see the Lexia learning. And then I also have in there for summer school in August of twenty two, because again, we're talking next year, not this year. And then June of twenty three, to put those summer school costs in there. You can still claim minutes for summer school, just like we always have, but we can fund it with this. That will take a little bit more work on the grant side, because we will have to do what's called time and effort reporting. For any staff members that we put their salaries in there, but I think it's something that we can manage and then still meet that requirement. So and just as a side note, DPI has still been working with the federal government. Because there are other pots of money that haven't been allocated yet from SIR three, so we will be getting additional funding, we just don't have approval on that yet. So we had to have a plan in place by March eleventh, because DPI said that we needed it by then. But we'll most likely be coming back in a few months with an updated version of this budget. And so anything over what we're approving tonight will most likely be new expenditures that we can use on on new things. The, I think the biggest issue and and maybe Tim can speak to this too, is that this is one time money. So it's really hard to put something in, like to hire a new staff member or something that's going to be a recurring cost. So it probably will take us some time, once we know what those additional funds are, to come up with a plan. Any specific questions on what we're looking at tonight?
I think Tim released a letter explaining how SIR funds work or whatever, so.
It's not necessarily the, what's in the plan, it's just having a plan, so.
Yeah, and again, you go back to remember, in the biennial budget, our legislators said, we, you'd be foolish or we'd be foolish to ignore this big federal, you know, chunk of money. And so they allocated this to try to run our operation, so we had to depend on this to do operational. It's not that simple, like Jen had to be very specific, but they say what you can and cannot, right, but there's a long list. But she intentionally shows some of these because they require less reporting, it still met the requirement, so I think that was very smart. So otherwise, it's just, it's just report on report on string, on string, upon string. So that was good and and then again, they're very specific with twenty percent for learning, which makes report, remember a while back, that we gotta stop this rhetoric of, we're behind, we're behind. Government says you're behind, you need to spend this money on it, so then I'm required to spend money on it, and I mean, it's good, it's it's it's. It's money normally you get at the state and said, use it as you please, now it's money we get from the federal government through the state and says, use it how we please. As long as, you know, fits the criteria, but it's working and it will be, like you said, with, you know. Jen and I talked, I don't want to throw a number out there, but it's a nice chunk of money that's coming, it'll be above our budget. But again, so that'll be a nice problem to have, and it, my first thought was Fund Forty Six, one time money, you know, so it'll be a nice thing, but it's a lot of work. With the accounting and and that piece of it, and we give reports every every month at our CISA meetings about all these things and it's. Eyes get glossy because there's just so much, oh, and it's kind of forwarded to Jen and, but yeah.
And it makes sense to me, like when you forwarded me the email yesterday and I'm like, oh, thanks for sending that, you know?
Yeah.
Because there, it's a, and each pot of money, even though it still might be a part of those SIR three funds, it might have to be treated differently. Which was was surprising. So so it's good to have have all that information. But hopefully, you know, we're we're almost a year into SIR three and we still don't have a final allocation, so hopefully that will happen soon.
It was goofy, but good too, as the state came out and said, oh, we've got the surplus of revenues that we have, now, you know, now, so, right? So now, yeah, so the good news is we might see, we might, you know, we're gonna see some additional monies in the state revenues as well, so I guess it's a good thing.
Being the tax doesn't give us any.
Exactly. But I want to get to you later.
Yeah.
When you earn a second budget.
Yeah, I'll say it. Is the inefficiency that drives. This cost one.
Well, at least they're not adding complication to this funding.
He says sarcastically. I didn't just.
Yeah, that was sarcastic.
I move to approve the SIR three budget plan.
Second.
All those in favor? Both. Thirteen possible future agenda items.
The candidates.
That is, what's the date we we watch for that?
Have to be the more committed.
Yeah.
Yeah. March sixteenth. Have you already reached out to Kelly?
Oh, well.
You know. We have the other, yes, here. Reporting on current dates, we have the ninth accordingly, learning meeting the sixteenth is the next board meeting, I will. One. I will be at that meeting. So. This is, and it's a site, so.
So the VP Kirk would typically run that, then I'll check with him and then we should have a backup plan. If he can't, I've never had that, but I particularly go to the pressure, I'm sorry, the clerk.
Yeah.
You will, so.
As it passes down the line, each person is required to make the meeting shorter.
You should do that.
Looking at some of the agendas, being the quote session. So again. Need to do roll call vote. Let's see. Bye, yeah, sorry. I will sit here.
I, I.